Soft shadows waltz on the marble floor. Time whispers secrets I can't ignore. A breeze so faded carries no sound, yet my heart leaps where grace is found. A gentle chain, a fragile dream. Life's tender echoes in a golden stream. Strings that weep, yet never fall. A noble tone, the soul's quiet call. Velvet dust grabs the world in silk. Each moment glows like honeyed milk. Stars stand watching the still of night, guiding thoughts to the edge of light. Can you hear the hum of the stars above? The silent hymn of eternal love. A voice that's yours, yet never your own. A melody etched in the heart of stone. A gentle chamber, a fragile dream. Life's tender echoes in a golden stream. Strings that weep, yet never fall. A noble tone, the soul's quiet call. The candle flickers in the quiet room. Shadows dance on the faded plume. Time whispers soft, it doesn't resume. Let the strings sing, let the hearts sway. A peaceful sonata to end the day. No rush, no chase, let the moment stay. Windows fogged with a gentle breath. A melody that wards off death. Life hums low in the silence beneath. Bow on the string, a noble decree. Harmony bound like roots of a tree. Each note a star in eternity. Let the strings sing, let the hearts sway. A peaceful sonata to end the day. No rush, no chase, let the moment stay. Curtains fall, the echoes sleep in this chamber. Calm and deep, time bows out its promise to keep. The wind hums low through hollow trees. A song of ages whispers with ear. Each note it carries a fleeting thought. Unraveled threads the mind has sought. The oak breeze for the mind, where shadows and light intertwine. Strings of solace, soft refined. A melody to heal unwind. The cello moans a gentle sigh. Violor answers questions why. The violin, a sparrow's cry. Together they weave a noble sky. Harmony of gold and gray. Fingers dance where dreams lay. Each string a voice, a soft display of thoughts that drift and fade away. The oak breeze for the mind, where shadows and light intertwine. Strings of solace, soft refined. A melody to heal unwind. Close your eyes, let it lead. A tender balm for every need. Bow breeze whispers, quiet creed. A hymn for hearts that softly bleed.
Shadows fall where the sun once lay. A whispered tune keeps the clouds at bay. Threads of gold in a sky so gray. The air hums low like a cello sway. Calm silhouettes in the evenings glow. Soft and steady, let the rhythm flow. Whispers linger where the breezes go. Calm silhouettes in the afterglow. Footsteps echo in a hollow hall. A quiet dance where the echoes call. Strings entwine in the music's throw. The sound is deep like the night's own sprawl. Time stands still in this hollow room. Each note blooms from the heart's own womb. A violin sighs, a viola looms. Cello grounds the noble gloom. Calm silhouettes in the evenings glow. Soft and steady, let the rhythm flow. Whispers linger where the breezes go. Calm silhouettes in the afterglow.
A candle flickers in the shadowed hall. The quill rests heavy, its sink will fall. Words unsaid, they linger and stall. In the courtroom of soft harmonies, where time slows and bends with ease. A verdict whispered through the tree. Velvet drapes shroud the quiet plea. Echoes rise like waves from the sea. Truth and grace, they seldom agree. Strings hum low, a noble sigh. Questions weave as seconds fly. Is the heart condemned? Or freed alive? In the courtroom of soft harmonies, where time slows and bends with ease. A verdict whispered through the tree. Fingers tremble, the bow takes flight. A noble tone in the dim twilight. Justice sways in soft, serene light.
The sun dips low, a golden veil. Shadows stretch, they softly wail. A crown of light on hills so still. Time bends, slow bends to my will. Crown of soft on all, they sing. Threads of sound on trembling string. Echoes rise then gently fall. No weight, no chains, just music's call. The forest hums its breath of prayer. Leaves whisper truths beyond compare. Each note a leaf, each chord a tree. Rooted deep in eternity. Bows collide, a fleeting spark. Binding light to the quiet dark. Crown of soft on all, they sing. Threads of sound on trembling string. Echoes rise then gently fall. No weight, no chains, just music's call. A kingdom born of fleeting tone. No stone or throne, just wooden bone. A melody spun from the heart's own thread. Alive in silence, though it's unsettled.
A sighs where silence grows. Beneath the stars where no one knows. Time moves slow like whispers cold. The echoes weave through gilded foes. Flow, oh flow, the ancient song. Carry us where we belong. Strings that hum, hearts that yearn. Teach the soul, let it burn. The moonlight bends, a silver blade. It cuts through dreams that never fade. A dance of shadows, soft and slight. Bound to the rhythm of endless night. The earth it quakes, the heavens bow. We ask not why, we ask not how. Flow, oh flow, the ancient song. Carry us where we belong. Strings that hum, hearts that yearn. Teach the soul, let it burn. Golden rivers run through time. Each note a step, each chord a climb. Broad's touch, the past restored. The flow of life, the ancient chord.
A quiet hall, a gilded blow. Whisper eyes where shadows flow. Steps of time, a gentle bow. Golden hall where echoes sing. Every note a silver wing. Hold your breath, the strings will ring. Curtains part, the world takes flight. Violin weeps in soft moonlight. Cello hums of a solemn night. Harmonies in stately grace. Feel the air, a sacred space. Time dissolves, leaves no trace. Golden hall where echoes sing. Every note a silver wing. Hold your breath, the strings will ring.
The heads a good hums in the quiet of night. Strings like whispers of fragile delight. The bow draws a sigh, soft as falling snow. Still waters round in, they cradle the sound. Echoes of secrets in silence are found. Still waters, still waters. The harpsy call call. The violin weeps where the shadows are tall. Viola responds like a voice through the hall. Shallow murmurs low, like a river below. Notes like stars on an endless sea. They shimmer, they dance, they set us free. In the calm, the noble, the quiet decree. Still waters round in, they cradle the sound. Echoes of secrets in silence are found. Still waters, still waters. The harpsy cling call. Oh, it's never old in the air so thin. Shadows stretch along where the day begins. The world in a hush, no footsteps fall. A quiet so deep it swallows all. Prickum of morning light. Plays a hymn so soft, so slight. Strings of dawn sing clear and bright. In the stillness of her sight. The dew holds secrets in silver pearls. A fleeting dance as the earth unfurls. Clouds painted soft by a master's hand. A cancer light, yet calmly grand. Time slows, it lingers, it bows. To the grace of the morning's vows. Prayer of morning light. Prayer of morning light. Plays a hymn so soft, so slight. Strings of dawn sing clear and bright. In the stillness of first sight. Each note, an echo of dreams untold. A mellowly woven in threads of gold. It rises, it fades, it drifts, it falls. Yet its beauty forever calls. Shadows dance on the marble floor. The air whispers secrets, nothing more. A tapestry of silence woven tight. Light in the painted gallery. Brushstrokes of eternity. What is hidden, what is free? Light in the painted gallery. Columns rise like frozen sighs. Time's soft echo never dies. Every glance holds a thousand dreams. Gilded frames, they hold the past. Fragile moments meant to last. Yet the light, it moves too fast. Light in the painted gallery. Brushstrokes of eternity. What is hidden, what is free? Light in the painted gallery. Strings hum softly, reverie. Light fades, but never truly leaves. In the gallery, we find what we see. Whisperings through gilded trees, a sigh that floats. A thought with ease. Each bow a quill, each note a phrase. Writing stories through the haze. Eee, peace so gentle, so divine. A melody within the spine. Let violins and cellos bind. A manuet for a peaceful mind. Shadows stretch where sunlight bends. Harmony weeps. The heart transcends. The viola hums a quiet prayer. Strings entwine, no burden there. In every pause, a world is found. In every chord, a sacred sound. Time slows its step, the soul unwinds. A manuet for a peaceful mind. Peace so gentle, so divine. A melody within the spine. Let violins and cellos bind. A manuet for a peaceful mind. So gentle, so divine. A melody within the spine. Let violins and cellos bind. A manuet for a peaceful mind. A clock that ticks but does not chime. A river flows yet stops in time. Each shadow whispers soft and slow. What secrets does the twilight know? Old world calm, a fleeting grace. Echoes linger in this place. Strings that hum of ancient skies. Old world calm where silence lies. The moonlight bows, a humble guest. The wind is dressed in its Sunday best. A single leaf falls to its rest. The heartbeat steady, unexpressed. Old world calm, a fleeting grace. Echoes linger in this place. Strings that hum of ancient skies. Old world calm where silence lies. A noble tone, a wistful sigh. The stars above, they can't reply. The viola weeps, the cello dreams. The violin spins, moonlit stream. Old world calm, a fleeting grace. Echoes linger in this place. Strings that hum of ancient skies. Old world calm where silence lies. The world turns slow like autumn leaves. Soft whispers hide in ancient peace. A distant bell, a faint reply. I breathe the quiet, I don't ask why. Quiet time, a fleeting sound in the stillness. Truth is found. Quiet time, a solemn vow to hold the moment. Here and now. A shadow moves, the light remains. Through winding paths and window panes. The air is thick with what could be a hushed refrain, a memory. Every pause, a gilded thread. Binding words we lift unsaid. Every note, a fragile grace carved in time. No need to chase. Quiet time, a fleeting sound in the stillness. Truth is found. Quiet time, a solemn vow to hold the moment. Here and now. Quiet time, a fleeting sound in the stillness. Truth is found. Quiet time, a solemn vow to hold the moment. Here and now. Let the string sing, let silence guide. Through the echo where dreams reside. Quiet time, where hearts align. A melody, both yours and mine. A single leaf turns silver bright. It dances slow in autumn's light. Each edge it bends, a whispered sigh. A fleeting moment passing by. Silver leaf, oh silver leaf. A fleeting time so bittersweet. Your quiet grace, your noble flight. A memory lost in twilight's night. The cello hums a tale untold. Violin weeps, threads of gold. The violin, a voice so high. Reaching stars in the velvet sky. Silver leaf, oh silver leaf. A fleeting time so bittersweet. Your quiet grace, your noble flight. A memory lost in twilight's night. In the hush of fading sun. A journey ends, another begun. A leaf that forms, a life that stays. A melody lingers, a solo bass. Silver leaf, oh silver leaf. A fleeting time so bittersweet. Your quiet grace, your noble flight. A memory lost in twilight's night. The shadows stretch where the sun once lay. A golden hush marks the fleeting day. Soft echoes drift through the solstice air. Whispers linger, none aware. Oh, solstice glow, your secrets keep. A world awake while we dare to sleep. Time stands still in your quiet. Time stands still in your quiet flame We rise, we fall, all the same The cello weeps, a low lament Viola sighs where moments went The violin calls, a yearning flight Chasing stars through endless night Harmony woven in threads so fine A dance of seasons, a grand design No words are spoken, yet all is said In the silence where the heart is led Oh, solstice glow, your secrets keep A world awake while we dare to sleep Time stands still in your quiet flame We rise, we fall, all the same Soft twilight spin Amber whispers soft within the air It hums, it sways, it bends Oh, amber light who glows You gleam in silent hymn A noble dream Through strings you sing, through time you stream Shadows stretch, the day retreats A cello sighs of violas A violin scents then leaps Each note a step, a path to tread A journey vast, a tale unsaid Through amber light where hearts are led Oh, amber light, you glow You gleam as silent hymn A noble dream Through strings you sing, through time you stream Marble rooms and whispered sighs Where time stands still, where silence flies A sonata played on threads of air Quiet marble rooms, forever there Violin, violin weeps A mournful refrain Viola hums of joy and pain Cello grounds the trembling sky In this stillness where dreams lie The walls don't speak, yet they know it all Every rise, every gentle fall In marble halls where stories sleep A noble tone, serene and deep Marble rooms and whispered sighs Where time stands still, where silence flies A sonata played on threads of air Quiet marble rooms, forever there
Golden light through windows torn Shadows dance upon the hall A silent breeze, a gentle call What do these walls recall? Oh, serene halls, speak to me Your echoes hum eternity Each creek, each stone a memory Oh, serene hall, your soul I see The floorboards whisper soft and low Stories lost to time's quiet flow Candles flicker, shadows grow What secrets do you stole? Strings of time plucked and spun A tapestry where none outrun Moments fade, yet they've begun To sing beneath the sun Oh, serene halls, speak to me Your echoes hum eternity Each creek, each stone a memory Oh, serene hall, your soul I see In your stillness, peace remains A noble heart, though time disdains Forever standing through joy and pains The serene hall where quiet reigns A rose bends low beneath the sun Shadows stretch where rivers run Each step a whisper soft and still Through marble paths that climb the hill Steps through the royal garden wide Graceful arches where secrets hide The ivy climbs the ancient stone In this place, I walk alone The fountain sings its endless hymn A quiet echo deep within The air is sweet with jasmine sigh A fleeting kiss before goodbye Golden light through the branches weaves Dances slow on the autumn leaves The breeze, it hums a melody Of time and lost eternity Steps through the royal garden wide Graceful arches where secrets hide The ivy climbs the ancient stone In this place, I walk alone